How about now? Okay. We'll call the meeting to order. We do not have a quorum tonight, so we're just going to hear a couple of presentations, and we'll vote to postpone till the 27. Is that...okay. Dave?
Okay, so just to get some official things on the record then. I'm Dave Pelton, Director of Real Estate Development with KB CAP. We're bringing back the site plan that was approved for 52 King Street because we want to add solar to the project. And the reason we're bringing it back now is when the plan was originally approved, we didn't realize that solar would be the option, and it is. We didn't know that the funding would be there. Now we know that we can do it, so we're bringing it back in front of you. And I'm going to let these gentlemen over here do the technical explanations, but thank you for being here and hearing this update.
All right.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jeff Allen from AEH Hudson. And this is the site plan that kind of shows what we're proposing to do. This is the site plan. I've got also a plan that Tyler Eads from Solar Logix present -- prepared. And the only thing on the ground that is new and different with the solar panels is there are some pylons over here, and I'll show you how these fit in later. These are the base that the solar panels will be mounted on. And there's some more of them along the parking area here down at the entrance from King Street. What this will be is kind of a solar carport, if you would. The roof will become solar panels, and residents will be able to park underneath there. There'll also be panels on the roof and other places. And then at the end of the property here, these are transformers, inverters, the other parts of the electrical stuff that don't need to be out in the field. We have also made one other change on the property is before we had, in the approved plan that we had back a year ago, we had a larger parking lot down here. And that had dumpster at the end of the parking lot here. Since then, we've slightly relocated the building, drawing it closer to King Street, or to King Street, yes. And so now, we had less space in here for parking. We've reduced the parking here some. And we took the dumpster that was at the end of this little turnaround area and moved it up here, so it's a little easier for the dump, the trash company to come pick it up. And also, they won't have to drive through the yard because there'll be families with children here. It's a little bit safer not having to have a big truck go through and back out of a yard. So we thought that was wise, and we were encouraged to do this by the city. And so that's the main change of the ground. Oh, it's also there, some other pylons down here. Now, we have a plan prepared by the solar company. And all of these pink areas are areas that where solar panels will be installed, several on the roof here, as I mentioned before, this array up here, and then an array out in this field. And those are going to be high enough so you can put picnic tables under them. You know, instead of having a little pavilion to have a picnic table under, you'll be, you know, eating your hot dogs under a solar panel. These are some views, what they'll look like, more architectural views. They're black in this picture, so you can see the panels. And then this is the end of the building where the transformers, inverters, and other various equipment is. Further down here, we've got kind of a scale thing. This is what the carport will look like. For example, it's, you know, this is a full-size van parked underneath of it, and so it'll be quite a bit higher. One of the concerns that the fire department had was, will they be able to get a fire truck under here? And yes, this is more than 13 feet above, or 13 six that they need, so we can easily drive underneath this area. These are more of the panels that'll be out in the field, and this is sort of a rendering of the building behind it. So you'll see there are picnic tables, just some shade area to play in or to recrete. So that's really the big change. The rest is pretty technical. Tyler Eads from Solar Logic is here and can answer any questions about the solar panels other than where they are. I know where they are, but that's all I know about them. So he could answer any questions you have on that.
Is that really all we're approving on this, Jeff? That it's just the solar panels?
It's the solar panels and...
That was one of the things.
Oh, yes. And the relocated dumpster. Also, part of your approval process gives you a year to start and two years to finish the project. It's been almost a year now, and we're just getting ready to start. We've been able to organize funding and get that all lined up. And so we're looking at now starting very soon. But because of the scope of the project, it may not all be done in one year. So we're asking with this renewal of the site plan or this change, that we can get that clock to start again. So one year to start and three years to finish because it's a big project. I've seen some of the budget numbers. It's scary. So that's the other thing we wanted to put in. Is that it?
Yeah, there's actually one other thing.
Okay.
So if I could go back to the...
It was what? And Jeff, I'm sorry you didn't have this on your...how do I go back to the overview?
I don't have the second CO1.
That one right there?
Yeah.
Okay. So this, these two parking spots right here, and Jeff, I'm sorry, we didn't get a chance to draw this line, but this perk, this is owned by Tammy Perkins, this house, and it never had any parking. It was, you know, if you...
It did have parking. It has parking easements.
Right, you're right. Are you Tammy Perkins?
Yes, I am.
Oh, Tammy's here. Yes. Hi.
Hello.
So there were easements for the parking. And so we are suggesting, what we would like to do is actually redraw this boundary line and just, you know, sell for a dollar to Ms. Perkins that triangle of land. So it just makes it so there won't have to be any future easements for parking, and it improves her property tremendously because now all of a sudden, there's more land and more parking. And it just makes it easier. So there will be a line, a property line redrawn right there. So that's part of this also. So I don't know if that raises any more questions, but we just feel like it improves both sides of the equation here. If you have questions, we can answer that too. So any questions on that part of it?
Yeah, any questions? Any questions or comments from the public? Is the newly drawn line, I can't really see very well, but on there or it hasn't been drawn? Okay. I'm like, I'm not seeing, okay.
It was on some of the other plans, just as a dashed line. It may be in here. Nope, it's not on this particular version.
So it's basically just going to like...
Right, it starts here at the corner of her property and goes diagonally down. Do you want to...we'll have to talk about this as far as, you know, where that's going to be.
Yeah, the way we're trying to do it is exactly what the easement would have been. Like, so the land that would be in the easement will now just belong to Ms. Perkins.
Okay.
Instead of belong, and we don't need it for acreage and, you know, so many units per acre, that it won't change our equation. So from that point of view, so we just, it just seems like it would improve Ms. Perkins' lot and be better for her to own it than have an easement.
Okay.
As I stare at it, as I stare at it more, I can see the lines a little better if I zoom in.
The fence that you have there, is that, what is that? Is that permanent, temporary? And it's not set to the easement boundaries, as far as I can tell? Would that, the one that's set up in the block, that temporary thing that...
So, sorry, just to get it on the record. So there's a construction fence that we put up around. That's just temporary. It's just to try and keep during construction to keep, you know, the neighborhood kids out of a dangerous area. But that's not on the boundary line, though.
Okay. And then is it going to be replaced with fencing along that boundary line? Or is that going to be a requirement from the city to have a fence there? And how about the maintenance of the property that I would be assuming?
We would be happy to put a fence up if you felt like it was better for your property. Like, if you didn't want, if you wanted a fence between those two, you know, we could put up a six-foot fence or something. But that's, you know...
And I don't know about taxes, like, what I would assume my taxes would go off. Is that correct?
Probably, yes. I mean, you could always say no. You could always say, no, you don't want it. It just seems like it's an easier...we can have this discussion offline, but we don't...
About how much of acreage is it?
It's, so it's...
Square footage.
So those are two parking spots worth of land. What is that, 10 by 20 per parking spot?
And there's snow removal easement.
Twice.
Goes around the side of the building.
Twice that, right.
I can see the line now.
Yeah, so the line goes, and we would include that too. The line goes here to that point, and then it goes diagonally. And it would actually continue all the way to that line because there's another little triangle right here with a snow removal easement. And so, yes, it would increase your acreage. I don't know that, I mean, y'all can talk about taxes better than I can, but I can't imagine it would change the taxes on the land in any significant way because most of the tax on land, most of the tax is based on the building, not the land itself, so...
You could call the assessor's office and find out what the difference might be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It certainly would increase...
I could take the assessor's show.
Yeah. It certainly would probably dramatically increase resale value, though, to have a better piece of land there. to have a better piece of land there.
Any questions? About how many solar panels are there?
On the...so the pole mounts themselves, each one has about 12...
Okay.
12 modules. So you have 24 of each pole mounts. And there's 114 modules upon the roof. Some of that's on the flat portion, some is on pitch portion. And then you have about 200, a little over 200 panels on the carport.
Okay. Ann, that doesn't put them over anything for our solar ordinance? Okay. Any other questions?
And also, I think all of the power will be used by the property.
Okay.
Rather than...it won't be sold commercially. So it is different than the ordinance, is more of a commercial.
Yeah, okay, good point. Thank you.
So how is that going to work then? So I'm assuming each unit is going to have their own meter?
No, so the red lines there are actually underground electrical. It's part of the construction process, what we're up in conduits. Part of the underground electrical system, and then we'll tie that back to the pedestal, which will carry the meter and inverters and all the disconnecting utility equipment. So from there, so basically, all the power generation will go back.
Sure, so...but I guess what I'm asking is, are the residents of the building going to be able to take advantage of the solar generation?
Yes. Because with KBCAP's projects, we always include utilities as part of the rent.
Got it.
So there's no...so they are initially metered, but utilities are already included in the rent.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it just helps the operation of the whole project.
Yep, perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do you know about how much energy it should...
Produce?
Yeah.
The system's modeled right now around 190,000 kilowatt hours a year.
So like, what percentage of the project?
The last model I saw compared was right around that one.
Oh.
It was close to 100%.
Okay.
Nice.
Nice. Awesome. Anybody else have any questions or any members of the public? Okay, so does the March 27th work for people? May 27th, yeah.
May 27th? I mean, I'm going to be here, so if I'm the only one here, I can always make a motion to postpone it.
Tom's going to be here. Are you available? Have you heard from anybody else when you put out that meeting date before?
I have David, Tom Hale, Scott Bill...
Okay.
Tom Dupree, and Hayley. So we have five.
So we should.
Okay.
The 27th. So we just have to vote for...
I'll make a motion to postpone until the 27th.
Second. All those in favor?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. So next up, we have ProSeal. Revisions.
Good evening.
Hi.
Dan Boyce with ProSeal. Here pretty simply just to move the building 15 feet. When we originally designed that building, we centered it on our property spatially, according to the lots. And when we had it surveyed and laid out, it just didn't work. It kind of blocked access to the back lot that we owned behind the ProSeal lot, and it made it difficult to move around. So we had a site meeting with Mr. Bradstreet and Mr. Brown, and it looked like it actually hindered fire equipment from getting around the back of the building. So moving it the 15 feet closer to Reservoir Street...I'm sorry, I didn't have the nifty thumb drive for you guys to look at, but I got some favorite plans if you need them. Moving it that 15 feet allowed access off Reservoir Street for Mr. Brown, and then also for us to be able to get to the back lot. Pretty straightforward. It's...the new plan changed the scope of paving a little bit as well. The old map showed it paved right up to the property line out back, and it's just gravel laydown area, so we weren't going to pave that much. But we're going to pave around the building still, but it just shows it's probably a 12-foot margin now of the back of the building rather than a 25 to 40-foot section of pavement that just didn't account for anything. So, pretty straightforward, but...
Any questions? So Ann, it's just the bolded part that you've added?
Yes.
Okay, that's it. So just so you all know, you'd just be voting on the one bolded addition to the findings and facts. The 25-foot distance from the edge of the building to Reservoir Street is what the...
Correct, yeah. And this one includes more frontage and paving in the front of the building on Reservoir Street side, so that they had access to just get behind there. It also opens up off Reservoir Street an ability for us to get to the back parking lot, but that's just gravel. I mean, it's behind where even we would stop paving Reservoir Street, which we're going to pay for that neighbor there that's currently working with gravel, so...yeah.
Great. Any other questions?
Make a motion to postpone this until the 27th.
Okay, second. All those in favor? Sorry.
No, no. Does this require me to come back and redo this, or can I just leave plans with you folks, or...
Yeah, because he asked to do the true faults or whatever. Does he have to...
If necessary, and I can't, I just...I mean, so I guess my biggest concern right now is the building slated to be delivered on June 17th. And, you know, we're currently working on the approved plan. You know, the groundwork on the approved plan that we have.
Yep.
If we were able to get this approved tonight, then I would have been able to move forward with the footer. So right now, we lose two weeks being able to install a footer. I'm hoping that this plan gets approved because I'd like to just move forward with the construction part of this because we're in the throes of it right now.
Yeah.
It's, you know, like I said, it's being delivered in one month. And by then, I should have been able to have the footer, the frost wall, everything completed so that the building could be erected, but, you know...
Maybe just to give you some level of comfort, you could just do an informal vote?
Yeah.
I mean, I personally have no reason to not approve this personally. Yeah, so...
I don't see a problem.
Yeah.
It kind of benefits everyone. There's more pavement on Reservoir Street. There's a turnaround for the city trucks to go up there. The list goes on. It just...and it's better for the...
Yeah, it was...I mean, it was signed off from all of the reviewers, so...
Yeah, yeah. So I guess just to clarify, because I want to stay above board. If I was to go ahead and start installing stuff, I know...I understand that would be at my risk if this was to be, you know, vetoed, I guess, at the next meeting. But given the fact that I'm just waiting weeks at this point...
Look at Dan.
Dan's in the back.
Dan, I know, Dan, don't look, Dan.
I'm sorry. Do you need to be pouring concrete within...
I need to be pouring concrete, yeah. I mean, if I was to just stop now and then wait until the 27th and then continue excavation, at that point, I'm well into the point where the building's just sitting on the ground. I mean, rather than being erected.
So next meeting is two week...
The 27th.
Twice.
27th. Building lands June when?
17th.
17th.
Yeah, yeah. And, I mean, two weeks is...that's quite a push to be able to do...
Right.
You know, a footer and a frost wall. I mean, have, you know... And like I said, I guess I don't want to step on my own toes. I don't want to do it wrong. But, I mean, if it's...if I can move forward with it, obviously, I got to try to, you know, because it's such a tight timeframe. And of course, this is my fault, so I don't blame anyone here for not doing it. Just we...once we got it laid out, we realized that it just wasn't...it wasn't working right for us, so...
Dan, do you want to...
Are you here for this?
I'm here to observe.
Okay. Do you have any questions or concerns about it? Okay.
Oh, okay.
All right, thank you. Yeah, we'll talk.
Okay.
I...yeah, I mean, I don't have any problems with it. We just can't take a vote on it tonight.
Yeah.
City engineers signed off. Fire department signed off. I don't see why I wouldn't move forward in the next meeting, but I can't. I also won't be at the next meeting.
I guess they're saying it's between you and Dan.
You and Dan.
Yeah. Okay, do you...thank you guys very much for your time. I don't mind...like I said, if you need the plans, I can leave them with you if you need to address them. And if I need to come back the 27th, that's fine too. I'll...
Do you want him to leave the plans, Ann, so we can sign them at the next... so they can be signed at the next meeting?
I got to be honest with you. I think the last meeting that we had here, Tom actually, I think...
He did, yeah.
Recused himself of working on our plan anyways.
He did.
So I don't know how this will work.
But if he's here, we have a quorum, and we could have voted.
Right, he can still recuse himself.
Yeah, he can still recuse himself.
With the quorum, okay. I was just thinking about that. I don't know that Tom would have voted on this anyways.
Right.
Yeah, he can't vote on it anyways, but he would still create the quorums.
No, yeah, that's fine. No, I understand. Like I said, I don't mind coming back. I'll do whatever needs to be done. I just want to keep the ball moving, if you will.
Yeah, no, I hear you. I apologize.
No, no, it's fine. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, thank you guys very much for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Dan has my number if you guys need him. Just poke him in, he'll call me. Thank you guys, have a good night.
Thank you.
And the last item is the mobile home ordinance. I think Ann sent around a summary. Does anybody have any thoughts, questions, or concerns so that we can vote on that in the next meeting?
Is everyone all set with the 300 square feet of recreation area per unit for...
Yeah.
Mobile home parks?
Yep.
I think that was the last...
The big thing.
That we were discussing.
Yeah.
Do you remember any other issues?
Well, the other thing that we discussed...
Oh, the RV thing.
Yeah, that was just going to be the same across all the zones. Right.
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Wonderful.
So we'll postpone that to a date...
Oh, yes, sorry, so...
Make a motion to post that until the 27th.
Second, all those in favor? Okay. You came to a very exciting planning board meeting for you to observe. We have had some pretty dicey ones, so... I motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?